Years of experience in public housing, dealing with development issues, tenant issues, and community issues. Today I'm asking for your vote based on my accomplishments as council member and treasurer. Village contracts that were typically renewed without competition are now set out for bids. The new shuttle contract will save the village almost $100,000 per year. I started that process to get a new contract. I set up a capital account and a capital budget, something we never had before. Moving forward, I want to use my current knowledge of housing and neighborhood issues to represent the village in the sector plan. Opening Page Park will be my number one short-term priority, and I'm asking for your support to continue that work. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will have Martha.
Hello, neighbors, and good evening. I'm Martha Salt, and through the past two years on council, I've seen what works in our village and what needs fixing. As a federal retiree who serves on a union executive board and works at a local nonprofit, I understand public service and our community's needs. Inside our village, we need to not just talk. Page Park, it needs to be fixed now. Our programs, they aren't just nice to have, they're essential, and let's expand what works. Safe streets, smooth sidewalks, and vibrant parks, they aren't luxuries, they're the backbone of our community. So beyond our borders, we need a stronger voice with Montgomery County and the state on decisions affecting our lives, like development, like regulations and fees that hit our wallets. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Now we will move on to the question and answer portion of the forum. Each candidate will have 30 to 45 seconds, depending on the question, to respond to each question. Again, the timer will start once the candidate begins speaking. Our first question. Sometimes residents worry that a new council will change or abolish their favorite services, amenities, and programs. What services, amenities, and/or programs are you committed to protecting? For this question, we start with Martha.
What programs for what? Could you repeat the question?
Absolutely. Sometimes residents worry that a new council will change or abolish their favorite services, amenities, and programs. What services, amenities, and/or programs are you committed to protecting?
All of them. It's that simple. The arts programs, the formerly Every Tuesday, but now Occasional Tuesday team, the bingo, the movie nights, the wonderful music, the celebrations, definitely the shuttle. I'm sure I'm forgetting a few things, but I have... That's what we're here for. That's what I said in my opening statement. I'm going to protect these things and enhance them. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we will have Tessie.
I'm a Martha. We're protecting them. We're making sure that if these are programs that everybody is interested in keeping, then we will keep them. We will enhance them. We will add to them based on the needs and the requests from the community and what it is that you would like us to accomplish.
Thank you. Next, we will have Allison.
Hi, I'm Ed Revent. This is something... These programs are for everybody, you know, and if people want them, we should be supportive of them. I certainly avail myself of them, especially the shuttle bus. And if there is a desire for them and if there is a need for them, I am committed to supporting if they continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Roy.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm committed to keeping everything we have. We just went through the budget process, and as treasurer, when it starts with the staff preparing a budget, submitting it to me, I went with everything. I didn't even suggest making any cuts. We need to continue what we have. You've probably seen me a lot at these events, the Wednesday concerts, the Thursday movies, so yeah, I'm committed to keeping everything that we currently have and expanding. I think there are more things we can add.
Thank you. That will be John.
Hi, I just want to say I really love living in the village. I think one of the things that makes it special is the amenities. The village center, it's wonderful. We're keeping it all and expanding it if we need to.
Thank you. We will have Alfred.
Well, it's always nice to hear that the projects that you helped start are having so much support. I remember when we tried to get this center, there was a large outcry from a small number of people that this was going to be a white elephant. When we tried to get the shuttle bus, similar protests came and said we shouldn't spend money on that. I haven't heard any of my colleagues here say anything about the police. The police is a new service, and at least two of the people who watched the budget very carefully did not want to continue that, so the problems are in the details. The programs that everybody likes are easy, but the ones that are controversial and with different opinions is where you see where people really stand when the going gets tough.
Thank you. We will end with Francine.
Did you go on?
Yes, I did.
Thanks very much. My husband and I and our grandchild, who's three, who lives with us and our daughter, we really have enjoyed programs that are here at the center, coming here in the evening, the beautiful fountain, taking part in the activities that have been set up around the holidays. It's all what adds to the spirit of the community, and it's something that definitely should be continued, and it's what makes this community so special.
Thank you, candidates. Our next question. What should the council's top three priorities be? Again, what should the council's top three priorities be? Candidates, you will have 45 seconds to respond to this question, and we will begin with Tessie.
Thank you. I think, of course, with Open Page Park, let's get that completed, have all the proper permits in place, and that ugly orange fence away from there so that we can all begin to enjoy well. Security, let's do a comprehensive study to ensure that we know what's the best option that we have and the most cost-effective, but one should not negate the other. And the third is to know what's going on in the community and working with outside resources to ensure that we continue to deliver the service that we are receiving and should continue to receive.
Thank you. Next, we will have Francine.
Thank you. Well, I've given a lot of thought to what the priorities should be. There are the things like Page Park, which is very sad to see the orange fence still up for so long a period of time. And of course, from my perspective, it's making sure that we do not have fees imposed upon our community for garbage collection or requirements for building energy performance standards that require many millions of dollars for our aging infrastructure to be retrofitted. It's not doable, and I have found that the county and state leaders need to be educated in a way that convinces them to receive from these homeless requirements. That's a priority committee.
Thank you. Next, we will have Alfred.
The immediate things are things that we can continue. All the programs of Page Park will finally, sadly, taking so long, will be opened. But we need to look towards the future, and the future is what goes on parts of the new sector plan. And the committee that was selected by the previous councils, I sit on that committee, has been working on that, and you've come up with what we think is a new, special amenity, a library, an art center that has community theater, perhaps a small golf course on the top, miniature golf. We have to plan for the future, and amenities are what we have that we give this community, and we need more of them, and of course, we keep all the ones we have. The other thing is, we do need more police, and we've got that in the budget, but some of the present council members have not indicated they want to support the police presence.
Thank you. Candidates, just a reminder, do you mind turning off your microphones? Thank you. Next, we have Martha.
I agree with everything other people have said, but I have to say, if I could make Page Park one through three, I would, but let's just leave it at one. It's a shame for us, and we do need to fix it altogether. I would say my second one is advocating for Friendship Heights beyond our borders, and that includes development, it includes some of what Francine's saying. We have a voice that you need to hear from us about what's important to us because they are making decisions about us. And I'm going to... Well, I agree with everyone else. I'd like to throw a third one in, incorporating resident input so that you know what you think matters to us and we act on it.
Thank you. Next, we have Allison.
I agree with what people have been saying. Page Park, of course, is a major concern, making sure that it's completed to the best of its abilities and that it's accessible to everybody. Number two for me would be safety. I am a pedestrian in the neighborhood quite a bit, so pedestrian safety, you know, at nighttime, do we need more lights? Do we need more security? Who knows? But doing a survey of that would be a great start. And then making sure that the neighborhood remains accessible. One of the joys of this neighborhood is that you can be sans car. It is a walkable neighborhood, and I want it to be accessible to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Roy.
Thank you. It's hard to come up with something original. I wrote the park first because it's quite frankly, I walk by it every day, usually more than once. It's embarrassing, and it needs to get opened. Second is the shuttle. We have a new opportunity with the new shuttle to rethink the routes, to rethink community participation. I think we should have maybe a formal citizens committee to give us input rather than getting it in little pieces here and there. I wrote transparency. I don't think we've done a great job of when people send us questions, ask questions at council meetings, of responding, of getting back to them. We need to do a better job, and then just, we need to be proactive about the changes that are coming. The red house, the new construction, our aging infrastructure, so that would be... That's four. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I think my... Well, one of my top priorities is to maintain and improve the quality of life in the village. I propose we start with the traffic comm... Development of a traffic comming pedestrian safety plan. I think we need that now, and I think we need it going forward. I think we need to do things in an efficient and cost-effective way, and that's part of the reason that I believe that we need to improve our planning process forward, try to make sure that we get major projects done efficiently, and also improve our cooperation with other jurisdictions, neighboring jurisdictions as part of the sector plan. Thank you.
Thank you. On to our next question. We received multiple questions about Page Park, specifically residents that they wanted clear answers about the legal review or lack thereof of the original contract with Green Suite, the county permitting process, ADA accessibility, and timing for the completion and opening of the park. Please explain how you will resolve these issues as a council member. You have one minute for answering this multi-part question. We will begin with Allison.
Boy, that's a lot for one minute. So as to the prior history, as to what went wrong, doing a review of that and disclosing information to the community should be a priority. Again, transparency is important. In my opinion, accessibility is incredibly important, so anything we're doing going forward, it needs to be at the minimum ADA compliant, but realistically, with the neighborhood and the demographic, it should be above that. It should be, again, accessible to everybody. So I would personally fight for that to my ability. What was the third part of that? Sorry.
When will it open?
What was that?
When will it open?
Time for the completion.
Well, that, of course, is up to the county to a degree with permits and things like that. So I would fight for sooner rather than later. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Roy.
Thank you. So for people who don't know how we got here, the prior council hired an unqualified inexperienced contractor to build the park. Al was on that council. He's the only candidate running who voted for that contract and then told the contractor, "You don't need a permit." So this council inherited a park that does not comply with county regulations, with federal accessibility requirements, required inspections that should have taken place during construction were not done, required plans were not filed. It was all preventable, but it's hard fixing it now, getting after the park's already been built, and that's what we've been struggling with. It does take time. It will be months, probably many months, which I know people don't like to hear, but that's the answer. We will work with the county to get the park open. One of the first things I'd like to do is sit down with DPS, Department of Permitting Services, get their input, and we also need to be completely transparent with the public, such as having a webpage giving the status of where we are.
Thank you. Next, we will have Martha.
Yes, Page Park is a mess, and everyone has looked at that watch tape for one day. Shouldn't have been one day, shouldn't have been two and a half years, so it really warrants our top priority. So yes, it was a bad design that was not ADA compliant. Yes, there was a contract that was signed without attorney review. Yes, no permit, you know, was issued, and the design did not comply with current requirements. At this point, in order to move forward as fast as we can while doing things correctly, I would hire an engineer, project manager, to be our interface with DPS and any other contractors we need, and to be constantly communicating with the council and the public. I would... I agree with the open information. Now, when will it be open? The main problems are, at this point, ADA compliance, and we will work with the county to fix it, and I fully support 100% ADA compliance. Hard to do that in a minute.
Thank you. Next, we will have Francine.
Well, it's been a mystery to me, and I say that as someone who has 45 years in federal service. When I saw it originally open, I was surprised at how there were no rails for some of the steps and how the area under the pergola was not... I hope I said that right, was not accessible except by steps. And so that was a surprise to me, and I understand that folks didn't think they needed to get a county permit, but even if you didn't think you needed a county permit and you thought that the council had the right to go forward without it, just making a structure that was so inaccessible in the first place to folks who, you know, might need a handrail going up and down some pretty steep steps didn't doesn't make any sense to me. And I agree with everything that's been said here about we have to have a concerted focus, and we have to explain what's happening going forward and get it done pretty quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Tessie.
Thank you. Yes, turn it off. From this direction, I can't see the light, so I apologize. I don't know what more to say other than I agree that there should be more transparency, create a website or a vehicle on which everyone can always check in on what's the status, what's the next steps that we are taking, how are we advancing this effort to open Page Park. My husband and I used to walk that all the time, and we'd hike to the back of the building, and now we have to walk down the luller, which is not bad for exercise, but it is a nice sore. And we would just want to fix as quickly as possible, but we want to make sure that we're taking the right steps with the right people and so that we can do this correctly and everyone is safe. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Hi, I think Page Park is indicative of a lack of a capital planning process. I think one of our highest priorities ought to be to implement a robust capital planning process. We have a capital budget for the first time, but we need to do a lot of work. We need to consult with experts. We need to write out project plans. We need to review them in advance so that when we begin to undertake a project, we have a plan in place, and we know what we need to do to get it done and to get it done in line with rules and regulations and that sort of thing. We need to consult with experts. Thank you.
Thank you. Alfred?
Well, Page Park goes back a long time, and I'm probably the one that's most frustrated because in 1978, I was essentially asked to lead the effort to get the land on which we are now fighting about the park. I personally negotiated the cost of that park, which otherwise would have been on high rise. And for the first 20 years, before I went off the council, the park was beautiful. Nobody objected to it. It had a beautiful scene, it had picnic tables, it had swings. And while I was off the council, the place deteriorated. There was a drought, there were snow sprinklers because we didn't have money at that time. When I came back on the council in 2021, I then tried to get moving forward and improve in our park, and when there wasn't oversight, the Parks Committee agreed that they had not realized a permit was needed. The head of the permit department from the county came down here and told us the permit would take five weeks, five weeks, that was two years ago. And that same Chris Allen also said the park was an old park, and we were making it improved, especially for people's handicapped access, and therefore, it did not require all of the parts of the ADA. There was a lawyer that gave the council specific information that said it did not need that, and we could change it later.
Thank you, Alfred. Your time is up. Thank you. Moving forward to the next question. Do you agree or disagree that funds should be used to hire off-duty Montgomery County police to patrol the village to increase security and ticket those drivers non-stopping at pedestrian crossings? If so, why? You have 45 seconds to respond to this question. Should I be the question? Do you agree or disagree that funds should be used to hire off-duty Montgomery County police to patrol the village to increase security and ticket those drivers non-stopping at pedestrian crossings? Why? You have 45 seconds to respond, and we will begin with John.
I think police presence is one part of the solution, but I don't think it's the only part of the solution. I think we should explore the possibility of, again, doing a traffic comming and pedestrian safety study. More cameras are a possible solution, so there are a lot of different ways to approach the problem. I think police are one part of the solution, but not the only solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha?
Back in November of 2024, I highlighted in my report that I supported an objective, comprehensive, holistic review of all aspects of safety and security. I think residents deserve that, and I still... That hasn't been done yet, and I believe it really does need to be done. And just like with computer security, there are different layers and levels, and they all need to be to play their role. There's not just one security measure that will work. And as far as the question goes related to ticketing drivers off-duty, Montgomery County Police Officers are not authorized to issue tickets to drivers.
Thank you. Following, we will have Francine.
Well, security is very important to me. I spent five years as an assistant district attorney in Brooklyn, New York, handling street crime and major offenses. And I spent 23 years as chief counsel to the Transportation and Security Administration after the terrorist attacks of 9/11. I like to see visible police presence, and I do think that sometimes the streets are pretty dark. We have lovely lighting, but maybe not as bright as it needs to be. I am in favor of more law enforcement presence, whether it's your county police or some other group that needs to be seen, and I would need to study it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tessie?
Thank you. Yes, we want to be safe. We all want to be safe. We want a comprehensive study of what would work best in our area, not just North Park and Luller, these areas, but the entire Friendship Heights community. Police presence can work and will work. We just want to be sure that we're staying within budget and that we are not wastefully using any monies with regard to security, but we want to be sure that we are all safe, we can walk these streets. I don't need my husband to escort me anywhere because I don't feel safe. But I do feel safe today, and feeling safer is always better. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy?
So when this came up before the council, Martha and I had the same approach, which was, we need a comprehensive study that looks at all available options. That includes security patrols, including the hours we utilize them. In the past, we only had security during the daytime when there's probably less of a need. It includes cameras, it includes maybe a security kiosk, but they never do height. It includes better lighting. I put money in the budget, the capital budget for lighting. Nothing should be off the table, but we need to evaluate these items together as part of a comprehensive plan, not look at each of these items as individual pieces because that just doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you. Alfred?
We've all heard the old saying, paralysis by analysis, and this is what I'm hearing tonight. The fact is that both Martha and Roy were very, very opposed to spending money on this project, which is in the budget, and it's already been shown to cut down the break-ins that were especially in front of 4620 and the contractual. And John, I think, has some good ideas about protecting pedestrians. The fact is that one of the officers was ticketing, and it proved very successful. If we have the officers who are off-duty but hired by the village, which is legal, Martha, they can then ticket, and if they do that for an hour or so of their full tour of duty, I guarantee you, after one ticket, people are not going to continue to go through the stop signs and everything else that we try. So yes, I fully support the police presence in the village.
Thank you. Allison?
As someone that's had a rather mixed experience with police presence over the years, I don't think that they are a panacea. I believe that better lighting and cameras, things like that, security patrols, sure, and sure, maybe... things like that, security patrols, sure, and sure, maybe police. I don't think police can solve all of these issues with people running stop signs or not paying attention to pedestrians. That's another issue unto itself. I'm not against the idea of police. However, I don't think that should be our primary focus for security, pedestrian safety, and all of that. I think it needs to be a much more comprehensive process. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question. Would you like to see more people attend monthly meetings in person, or is it better to watch the live stream from home? How would you encourage better attendance at monthly meetings?
An hour and 10 seconds?
For this 30 seconds, excuse me, I'm tired, and we will begin with Tessie.
Serve food. You know, have something to advertise the topics, ask people to participate in it, have refreshments, if that's what it takes to bring people in. I think that you probably have good attendance online, which is good. And that's necessary for a lot of people that live here in our community. But if you want to come out, let's create a welcoming environment for them to do that.
Thank you. Allison?
So I don't think that it's necessary for people to be here in person. I do think that encouraging people to watch online is a fantastic idea. For those of us who work from home, so on and so forth, it was very convenient to be able to use the online viewing as a call. But maybe for attending in person, maybe if we have a little event prior to, right before the meeting, meet and greet, that sort of thing, so that people would come down and avail themselves of refreshments, amongst other things, it would get them involved more, maybe they would want to come down to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have John.
I think that generally speaking, we do need to create a bit of a more welcoming environment at our committee meetings. They at times seem a little staid and sort of back and forth on issues that aren't really of much concern necessarily to people in attendance. So I think we need to think about how we make the meetings more welcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alfred.
I think we leave this up to individuals. Look, it tonight is an important meeting. People are interested. They come. When we have something controversial, when we had the three public discussions, transparency about Page Park, the place was full. When there was a discussion about having a playground on Page Park, the place was full. So the agenda goes out, and people can decide whether they want to be here or stream or not come at all. That's called democracy. So I think it's fine the way we're doing it.
Thank you. Martha?
Very quickly, I just need to respond to Al saying I opposed the security budget. That is absolutely not true. I never opposed any security budget item. So with respect to our meetings, I'll be kind of blunt, not so long, not so boring. And we should be able to interact with residents and, you know, deal with people rather than deal with paper.
Thank you. Francine?
Yes, I like the hybrid approach, but I think it's absolutely essential that there be give and take in most meetings between those who are sitting at the table here and those who are participating in the audience. And that's something that we have started now at the Elizabeth. The board meetings are now hybrid after being on Zoom for a very long time, but they're also more participatory, and we're allowing more interaction during the entire board meeting. And that's something we would like to see here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy?
Thank you. So how people attend is a personal decision. I prefer people attend in person. Clearly, I would always be in favor of serving food. But I think the question isn't how people attend, but how many are attending. We've seen a decline in online and in person. I think that gets back to transparency. People are very frustrated. They come, they ask a question, they don't get a response. And we owe people, if not in real time, we need to have a way to get back to them. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Moving on to our next question. Do you have any thoughts on how to involve more younger folks in village activities? You have 30 seconds for this question. And we are going to start with Francine.
Well, I think you need to have activities that adhere to younger people in order to encourage them. And I am in favor of that. There was some discussion about opening a playground here in the back for children to play. As a community, it is not that child-centric. And I think there are a lot of children living here, actually, and I would fully support doing more in the way of activities that are focused on children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Martha.
To involve more younger folks, as far as younger adults, I think we should have more citizens committees where anybody who's interested in a topic can come. Like, our environment community is a citizens committee. Basically, anybody who's interested can participate. Forming groups that our young people are interested in, allow them to form their own group. I know this is an older person's group, but we did form a women's group, and have programs for children. Children are not little adults, as we know. So something for them would bring them and their parents here.
Thank you. Roy?
Thank you. So I agree. We, you know, the demographics in this village are moving very slowly, but they are skewing younger. In my building, we have an enormous number of children living there. You see them at the bus stop. I think we do need more programs for them, not to replace what we have, but in addition. That also includes young adults. I have a 27-year-old daughter who I would like to see some events that she can participate in. So I do think we need to expand what we offer here.
Thank you. Allison?
I think we need to expand online options as well, things that can occur online for younger people, at least in my generation, Gen X, or older millennials. A lot of them are not as good on big group settings, but they will do things that are offered online. I agree with the childcare thing or the child facilities, maybe pets' happy hours. A lot of people with pets, and some of us are younger. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you. We have Alfred.
Over a period of time, the young people have been involved in cycles. Years ago, we had a very successful 2030s group. Then, one by one, they got married and left, and they didn't have any replacements. More recently, within the last couple of years, we had another group that started. It was also successful. A lot of them actually, Francine, in our building, the Elizabeth, but they too found greener pastures. We do have programs. We have an excellent program director. We do try to have programs for all age groups, but there will be a flux, and it's not, I think, a failure if we don't have all of these groups represented equally at all times.
Thank you. Next, we will have John.
I do support more children's programs. I also think that coordinating closely with the Friendship Alliance, which is a group that represents the broader Friendship Heights area. They're doing a lot of good work with younger folks who are making recommendations about what's needed. And I also think that we need to understand that there's, Montgomery County is planning for more workforce housing in this area. That will tend to bring in younger people, and we need to be prepared for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tessie?
I love the kids. One of the businesses that we had was a cooking school for children. And it is so important to keep them engaged, have creative outlets for them, and just partner with other resources in the community, outside of the community, like the new daycare that we have, that we could work together to ensure that we have the programs that are attractive to the children in this area.
Thank you to the audience members who submitted questions. We will move on to a few candidates. What is your position on eliminating car lanes to create protected bike lanes on Wisconsin Avenue in Friendship Heights? Do you like me to repeat the question? What is your position on eliminating car lanes to create protected bike lanes on Wisconsin Avenue in Friendship Heights? This is a 30-second question, yes. And we will begin with Alfred.
Wisconsin Avenue is not coming under the jurisdiction of Friendship Heights. However, it does impact us. I would not be in favor of closing a car lane. The lanes on Wisconsin Avenue are already congested because a lot of people stop for the doctor's offices. The cyclists, I think, do have to be very cautious on Wisconsin Avenue, and it's not a Friendship Heights jurisdiction, so we would have no way of doing anything on that.
Thank you. John?
Well, I would just say I love to bike, but I think a bike lane on Wisconsin Avenue would be very challenging because it is so congested with traffic already. But I would support more bike lanes on less crowded roads in the village and neighboring jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Tessie?
Yeah, I agree. I don't see how we can, you know, have a bike lane on Wisconsin Avenue, apart from working with, you know, other counties, with Montgomery County directly, and see how they can work with us and think through the whole process. But certainly to create safe bike lanes to direct people to the parks that we already have, that they, we can bicycle through or even go onto the trail, the Crescent Trail.
Thank you. Roy?
Thank you. So that's not something I've heard ever mentioned before. It's probably not something, even though it sounds like a good idea, it's probably not feasible because there's a lot of construction on Wisconsin. We're getting a new building next to the Marriott. The Maza Gallery is opening. So as Al said, you're getting more traffic. So to have more traffic on fewer lanes, and people are stopping at the medical offices, it's not something that sounds like it would be workable for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha?
I agree with what everyone else has said, and this is a perfect example. If this idea is emanating from the planning board or Montgomery County or some other organization, this is an example of how we could voice our concerns using the village here, because we're a lot of residents here. It's a lot more effective than individual people sending emails or calling their representative. So this is an example of communicating with the outer authorities.
Thank you. Allison?
In a perfect world, sure, but again, the realities of it, I just, I don't see how it would be feasible. I think it would just be double-park cars in front of all of the buildings still, like it is now. It's not like that section in front of the Barlow Building you can ever drive on, regardless, in the right lane. I've never really put a lot of thought into this. I don't even know how to ride a bike, but it would be great, I think, for many people. I just don't see it coming to fruition. Thanks.
Thank you. Francine?
I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the next question. There has been concern about the working relationship among council members. What will you do to ensure cooperation and goodwill among council members? Again, there has been concern about the working relationship among council members. What will you do to ensure cooperation and goodwill among council members? You have 30 seconds to respond, and we will begin with Allison.
So first of all, I don't think that disagreements necessarily mean that there's a bad working relationship. However, we have an almost complete turnover. Almost everybody who is running was not on the council before. We do have two people who are running now that were on this prior council. So if that was a concern, and you have a turnover of people, you have a different group, and you may not even have those issues. Of course, I want to listen to people and take into consideration their opinions, so on and so forth. But I think the problem may just resolve itself to a degree. Thanks.
Thank you. Roy?
So I understand where that question is coming from. There have been some issues among council members, I think partly because we have, I believe, five first-term council members. We have different backgrounds, different opinions. I've never been opposed to people disagreeing. I think sometimes you get better decisions from disagreements. It's really just being respectful, valuing other people's point of view, and not necessarily taking things personally when people disagree.
Thank you. Alfred?
I think the problem between some of the council members was not as serious as the strife that you all don't see between the council, some of the council members, and our staff. Our most valuable source of influence here is our wonderful staff, and they were not treated appropriately. I know this for a fact, and I think one of the recurring themes was that they weren't shown the proper respect, and they were underpaid. They did not get the pay, that the consultants that were hired to give an analysis, the analysis was not followed.
Thank you.
And that's a shame.
Thank you. Martha?
I share the concern. I've thought a lot about this, and when I went around trying to get people to be interested in running for the council, I sort of laid out some of the expectations of what I wanted, which was an agreement to have respectful treatment of everyone on the council, an agreement, if there are differences, to work those out and not let them linger, and to put the priorities of the citizens first.
Thank you. Francine?
Well, I've had the opportunity to spend a good deal of time with everyone who's sitting up here, folks that I'm running with, and Al, who lives in the building that I live in. And I don't anticipate any problem going forward with the professionalism of the incoming council. I think folks will treat one another with respect and treat the community with respect, which is what we all deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Tessie?
We're here to serve you, and so that is the priority, and we will work together to do that. If there are disagreements, that's okay, because we all bring different ideas and different experiences to the table. And I don't really see it as a disagreement as much as it is a point of discussion, so that we can work through and come to a good resolution that's going to serve you and us, because we're also residents in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. And John?
I would just say very quickly, as a career planner, collaboration and cooperation is absolutely essential to getting things done. And I will work tirelessly to try to is absolutely essential to getting things done, and I will work tirelessly to try to reach consensus on issues as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. We have time for one more question. Village spending is likely to continue to rise, especially given expenses associated with the parks and the Red House, and perhaps cuts in Montgomery County funding. What new sources of revenue for the village would you consider? And I'll repeat the question. Village spending is likely to continue to rise, especially given expenses associated with the parks and the Red House, and perhaps cuts in Montgomery County funding. What new sources of revenue for the village would you consider? Candidates have 30 seconds to respond. We will start with, excuse me, Roy.
I should get more than 30 seconds, but we have enough money to pay for our programs. We don't need to cut programs. We don't need to raise taxes. Our sources of revenue are somewhat limited. The Red House will generate money, but our costs are going to increase for that. My concern has always been on the long-term financial health. We do have an infrastructure that's aging and expanding. The economy around us is struggling, and that's always been what I've talked about for two years, to make sure that we have the funds to weather these downturns and maintain our programs.
Thank you.
Well, I have also taken a look at the budget, and I believe there is sufficient funds for us to do the work that has been done previously and the things that we'd like to do going forward. So I don't have any desire to see us look for additional sources of revenue.
Thank you. Tessie?
I understand by speaking with my fellow candidates that we are in good shape. This is my first time running, and I, you know, good shape means that we have the money to pay what we have commitments on and to plan for the future. But to anticipate what might come, it's never a bad idea to look at future resources or avenues for income for our village.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think our budget is generally in pretty good shape, but I do see that we'll have, we are likely to have issues down the line in terms of paying for needed capital improvements, and that's one of the reasons I've advocated for development of a capital plan, because it allows you to think ahead and plan to get the resources that you need to make things work. And in the long run, it's cheaper and more cost-effective to do that planning ahead of time.
Thank you. Allison?
So I'm in agreement. I do think a capital plan would be a good idea. I think we just need to be smart with our money, with what we have, because we do have a good control of our finances at the moment, certainly. It's hard to predict the future. We don't know what's coming, and things have been rather chaotic in the DMV as of late. So again, just being smarter, not necessarily looking for new ways to obtain money, but just not wasting what we do have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like others have said, I don't think we need new sources of revenue, at least in the short term. And if that question was sort of to feel any of us out about our proclivity for a tax increase, I am against that and don't think we need it.
Thank you. And Alfred?
Thank you. Just to clear up a few misconceptions the audience may be getting, we are in very good financial shape. We have $3.5 million in our reserve, and just today, we got another million dollars thanks to the negotiating skill of former council member Michael Meese. We have enough money for all of the capital projects that have been discussed, John, and we have enough money for our operating budget. And yes, if there was some sudden need, we do have the right to raise the taxes, which no one's in favor of. We have the lowest tax rate in the county for $100, and we haven't raised it for 20 years, and I would hope we don't have to raise it with $4.5 million in our bank.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we cannot get to all the questions tonight, but I want to make sure we have time for our closing statements. Now, each candidate will have an opportunity to provide a closing statement of one minute. We will start with Alfred.
Let me bring up what we didn't have a chance to go into more thoroughly. Rather than talking about myself, I said briefly that the most important amenity we have in this village is not this center, not the shuttle bus, not the trees, not the parks that I had a part in getting, but our staff. Our staff keeps all of this together, not all of this wonderful talk up here. And the staff has been underrated. It has been disrespected, and to give you an example, when it came to discuss salaries, it was felt that we needed, the council, that I did not sit on, the council had to hire an outside consultant because they felt the salaries were too high. And surprise, surprise, when the outside consultants came in, they said the salaries actually were $50,000 under what they should have been. And then these people that talked so nicely about the staff, they didn't want to pay the $50,000. They ended up paying $25,000. I think that disrespects the staff, and that has to be repaired.
Thank you.
So if elected, we're here for you. We're here to hear your ideas, to try to implement what you would like to see in the community. We are here to support you as part of the community. It's not about individual things like the staff here, or maybe about whatever my pet project is. It should be about what you guys want, all of you, everyone. Everyone in the village has, should have a voice. And if elected, that's what I'm going to be here for.
Thank you.
So we've heard a lot of ideas tonight about the village, the people here, the past, and some about the future. I personally owe a debt of gratitude to the people who built this wonderful community and to the people in my life who allowed me the opportunity to live here and, to be honest, the ability to afford it. Maybe you feel the same way. Now we have an important choice to make. Seven of us are running as a slate committed to collaborative leadership. Vic Basil unfortunately is unable to be here tonight, but our slate of seven shares basic principles of governance, working through differences respectfully, avoiding the divisiveness infecting our country, thoughtful discussion where every voice matters, not just ours but yours, and serving you. Thank you, and I respectfully ask you to vote for our slate.
Thank you. Roy?
So it's been an honor to serve as a council member and treasurer for the last two years. Friendship Heights is a great place to live. When Marlena and I were looking to move, after we came to Friendship Heights, we knew we were home. We stopped looking. I want to continue what works in our community, the programs, the shuttle, our parks, the center, and much more. And over the last two years, I have collaborated with the staff and my fellow council members to make that happen. I also recognize the challenges we face, which include opening the Red House, opening Page Park, representing the village in sector plan discussions, and security. I'm excited about the next two years and working with the six other accomplished candidates I'm running with. I look forward to continuing as your council member. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for their involvement in our election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I mentioned before, I live in Willoughby. I'm running because I love Friendship Heights. I love the Village Center. I love the amenities. The sense of cooperation and community, I think, is really rare in a high-rise area like this, and my wife and I marry. I just love living here. And I think I can help because I have some budgeting and planning experience that I think that can be, can help make things better. But I also, I simply want to give back, and I want to give back in a way that builds consensus, cooperation, and we're working together to make the village a better place to live. Not that it's not great already. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, everyone, for being here tonight and for listening to our input on your questions. When my husband and I sold a house and decided to find somewhere else to live, we looked around, and we visited an awful lot of parts of this county, and we decided to live here. And we could have lived in many different areas of the county and many different areas of the country, but this is where we chose to be. And I think it is a wonderful place. I go back to the feeling that you were saying, John, about the community. It is rare, and we saw that when we made our hunt for a place to live. I am devoted to the community. My whole career has been in public service, and I do think that we have challenges ahead. I think we need a strong advocate in the way of the council to represent us, and I'm prepared to give it my all. So thank you very much and look forward to the election.
Thank you. And Tessie?
I'll bring it home. So, you know, I have it written out, but really, Mitch and I moved here in 2011, like I said earlier, and we were renting at North Park Avenue, and we just fell in love with this area. Every time we walk through these streets, we are blessed, we are grateful, and thank you for being part of creating this area, Al. And I've always said to him, I want to get involved. And so here I am, open and ready to serve you and to serve all of us in this community, however it is that you need representation. And so thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, candidates. Thank you to all the candidates. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Montgomery County, thank you to the candidates and everyone in the community for your interest in this election. In-person voting will take place on Monday, May 12th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Community Center. Just repeating, in-person voting will take place on Monday, May 12th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Community Center. A recording of this forum will be available on www.friendshipheightsmd.gov with a link that will go directly to the live stream. Have a good evening, everyone.